...meeting for Wednesday, July 2nd, 2014, and take the roll call for you.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Pauli?
Here.
And Mayor Neely.
Here. Thank you. Would you please join me in the flag slide?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're very pleased to have President Joanne Trusdale from Clackamas Community College here to speak to us about a major enterprise coming up. Would you please come on forward and bring anybody else you want with you.
Thank you, Mayor Neely, President of the Commission Mum, and all the Commissioners, and Mr. Frazier. Very nice to see all of you. My name's Joanne Trusdale, President of Clackamas Community College, and with me tonight is Chris Groner. He's board member and represents the Oregon City's Zone Four area. We're here to talk a little bit about the Clackamas Community College bond process and the report that we have for you tonight. But before I begin, I just want to say that this kicked off through a community engagement effort several years ago, and your support in getting out the word to have people in our communities breathe life into what did they want Clackamas Community College to be is really important. You encouraged, as a commission, you encouraged people to participate. You had information not only in local places here, water bills, you name it, really helping us so that our major community in our district could be well represented in what they saw as a vision for Clackamas Community College. So with that, I'll begin, and then I'll turn it over to Chris Groner. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about this report. First of all, what the community, and through the community engagement process, asked us about was to maintain affordability in education and job training. And this do the math slide is fun because we are the lowest public education and private education provider in the state in terms of cost. So what you pay is $4,100 for a year. What you get is upon an occupational degree completion, 87% employment, students report within a six-month period of that occupational degree. 77% who identify transferred to a four-year university, public or private, have done so within the year after they've taken advantage of this. And 46% of our students who do graduate and either are in occupational degrees or go on and participate in a university degree actually gain employment in Clackamas County. So our students live, get educated, and live close to home. When we talk about what Clackamas Community College has done and what continues to do, we offer the quality education and job training. That is one item that our community members said over years, our almost nearing 50 years of service, we've been providing affordable career technical skills programs and transfer degrees, basic skill education, workforce and business services, job training, and community education classes. For Oregon City, this really hit home several years ago when we worked with the Blue Heron Company on rapid response and getting individuals retrained and re-careered. Over 30,000 students each year take courses at the Oregon City campus, and also, we have three campuses. The Harmony Campus, it's our allied health services course center, where it really simulates everything you would find from a trauma unit to a regular doctor's office. Do our Wilsonville Campus, which focuses on apprenticeship and energy management, energy resource management in partnership with Portland General Electric, and utility training alliance program that we there, that are there. Also, in terms of what we do, we are in each of the communities, in our outlined communities. You can actually get to a Clackamas Community College location within 20 miles unless you live perhaps at the edge of Ripple Brook Ranger Station. That might take you 25. We're in each of the high schools as well, and we will be adding to that in a moment. As we began our next 50 years, and the board began envisioning what our next 50 years would be, beginning in 2016... Okay. I'm actually pressing. Thanks. When the board started beginning, imagining the next 50 years, the idea there was to ask the community to do what did they value, take a look at our current facilities conditions assessment, and really do a strong strategic assessment of each of our facilities. We do have our original building, the Claremont Center off of Beaver Creek Road, which was built in about 1966. We needed to determine education and job training programs for the future and assess our current facilities. So match up, what did the community want? What did the facilities tell us that needed improvement? What did, from a strategic standpoint, the match between what the community wanted, what the facilities could provide and be reconfigured into? And then really say, and hone in on, what is it that we need to focus our attention on? And, oops, and what we also needed to do was to take into consideration really what the community and students wanted. And so, from affordability, the college froze tuition. The board took action to freeze tuition again for another year. We've created a one-stop service for employers. We're doing a variety of career center services so that students have a more lifelong approach. These are things that we had already in place, but what we found is we could strengthen those offerings, improving the college information channels, and more opportunities for internships and cooperative work-based services. I think the most important thing that going into this, that we also realized and heard loud and clear is, whatever we do to match up future demands, current facilities, and bring a package together, the board took very seriously the feedback. We need to do something that continues the current average annual investment that people already make in Clackamas Community College. So essentially, don't increase taxes. And so, they took that very seriously, and the proposal that Chris will talk about essentially does that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the committee, or Commission, I apologize, wrong venue. So as Joanne said, we're here to talk to you today a little bit about the future of Clackamas Community College, and specifically how we get there. And in that is, the board is developing a $90 million bond measure for the November 4th ballot that would modernize facilities, build new equipment, or provide new equipment for high-demand careers and additional classroom space and lab space that we desperately need right now. As she also mentioned, we anticipate the average property tax rates would be what they are currently, so no increase over the next decade. The goals, thank you, the goals of the bond project are specifically to increase access to affordable education, which has been something that's been something I've worked on for a number of years through my college career, and why I'm proud to represent Oregon City on the College Board, as well as to provide training for family wage jobs that are close to home. Again, a passion of mine, and I know many of you that that is passion of yours as well. To train students in high-demand careers such as nursing, engineering, and manufacturing, and to update and modernize equipment and lab facilities so students are trained to industry standards. The bond would construct an industrial technical learning center, expand and modernize equipment and facilities for training in high-demand careers, improve existing buildings throughout the district, and replace 61-year-old building, 61-year-old building at the Harmony Community Campus with an updated workforce development and training facility.
Right now, to match the board's proposal for a $90 million bond at a current tax rate of 19 cents per thousand of assessed valuation, which is the average that has been paid over the last 10 years, we've, the board also had a directive for us as staff to go out and secure additional investment dollars to match. And we've been able to do that. We've secured 16 million in state matching funds specifically for the Industrial Technical Learning Center. It was a key economic development strategy for Oregon City, for the county, and also for the state. And we also have secured $8 million for match at the Harmony Community Campus for workforce development, especially incumbent worker training, and then science, additional science labs, and allied health and health sciences programs there. Our college foundation has actually began the process of securing $5 million in private investment to match the public's investment. The board has also indicated that while we have $155 million of narrowed-down important investments to make over the next five years, the bond will contribute 90 million of that. It's the expectation that through grants and other donations, such as what we have, we've raised 21 million to date, that we will anticipate raising the remainder so that the full weight of the investment of 155 million is made. And much of this is really because of all of the business partnerships. We have business partnerships that provide us with equipment. We have business partnerships that have indicated if we can expand these facilities and update them, they will provide us with equipment, and they'll make a long-term commitment to us for that kind of equipment that's necessary. The equipment in manufacturing, science, and engineering is changing so rapidly. It's not just about the new iPad or the tablet. It's the new iPad and tablet, and how it interacts with the electric car in diagnosing and fixing, or how it relates to water quality. So it's all of those kinds of things.
So I guess in closing, as your Clackamas Community College board representative for Oregon City, as representing a fifth generation of Oregon City residency, residents, graduate of Oregon City High School, and alumni of OC, of Clackamas Community College, we're urging your support and asking for your help in getting this bond measure passed. I will have to stop and say that you've already done, many of you, if not all of you, have really helped us in doing a number of things, in reaching out to the community, and coming to the point that we're actually where we are now. So I do thank you for all of that. So one more ask is that we're asking you to support, support the efforts to pass the bond. If you could take the time to go to votyesclackamascollege.com and to endorse, donate, or volunteer, or all three, we would be very appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very good.
First of all, I think it's great that we have as our president of Clackamas Community College, alumnus of Clackamas Community College.
Yes, and of Oregon City High School.
Of Oregon City High School.
1979. I don't mind dating myself.
I mentioned this at a chamber event where you made a presentation. When I started at Portland State in 1961, the tuition there had just gone over $100 a term.
The audience is laughing.
We recognize inflation and so forth, but the fact of the matter is that college, public college tuition in Oregon has gone up at a rate of 2% to 2.5% higher than the minimum rate wage increase. So it's become far, far more expensive, and I want to thank you for your efforts to actually keep the tuition at Clackamas Community College as low as you possibly can. I don't think you've increased it in a few years. Is that right?
We did increase it modestly last year, but we did freeze it for this next year. So the rates, we are roughly, I want to say about $10 per credit hour below any of our other community colleges. The board has created an indicator that is based on median household income. We're trying to make it affordable based on median household income rather than just who's lowest in the state. Our students work, I was, when I worked, I worked at a minimum wage job, and I could make it through okay. Our students are working on average 30 hours a week to 32 hours a week, and it just takes longer to get through. And our Community College Foundation has been able to commit over a half a million dollars each year in scholarships. The board's attempting to do everything we can to, everything they can and everything we can, to lean up and ensure that every dollar that a student invests, or that a parent invests on behalf of a student, is used wisely, because we understand, both Board Member Groner and I understand what it's like to be a community college student and what we pin our hopes on. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Intend to, we have a quarterly publication that comes out from the city called The Trail News. I'll be putting a statement in there about this program. I got a mayor's page there. We'll run it through the Secretary of State's office to make sure that we're presenting things that are simply factual, educational, essentially, so to make sure that I don't get accused of electioneering. Somebody in our community accused me of that at one time, which wasn't true, but anyway.
Thank you again for taking the opportunity, or giving us the opportunity to come and talk with you.
This is extremely important. We've got, we've got zone industrial lands to both the north and the east of the campus. We feel that we'll be looking for developers there that can develop synergistic relationships with you all to give your students a chance to maybe do internships or something of that nature. And also, I know you have, I know you have people in the private sector come in and teach classes that are actually involved in the professions, and I think that's great.
Yes. On that note, in the Industrial Technical Center, the feedback we got from the community was about location on the Oregon City campus, as well as from some businesses that are, that are exploring ways they can actually contribute to a partnership building that would include an industrial technical business incubator opportunity, that's some of the money that we'll be raising, so that they can start there and then spin off out into the lands that are contiguous to the Oregon City campus.
I think it's great.
We've got our Economic Development Manager, who will be anxious to jump onto anything that...
That's exciting.
So this is great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The next thing, I'm going to read a proclamation here. The proclamation is a proclamation for the Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation. Whereas the city of Oregon City recognizes the importance of investing in our own human and capital assets to build strong families, neighborhoods, and communities, and whereas we know that access to healthy and affordable food builds stronger families, such that children who are food secure have significantly better outcomes in health, education, and long-term economic success as adults, and whereas we know that home ownership builds stronger neighborhoods, such that homeowners are significantly more likely to invest in property maintenance and improve and engage in civic participation, and whereas we know that financially stable families build stronger communities, such that those who develop good savings habits are more likely to achieve a sustainable asset goal such as homeownership, and whereas to assist and empower our cities, individuals, and families to create future rich opportunities and free from poverty, and whereas this effort, along with the similar celebrations in Lane and Marion Counties, will offer our community the opportunity to create positive change, build a stronger financial future for themselves and their families, participate in community ownership and governance, contribute to a healthy and vibrant region where everyone invests in themselves and their community. I, dignity and leave Mayor of Oregon City, by virtue of the authority vested in me, hereby commend NECO, Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation, on their work of building opportunities for our community, access to financial stability, support for microbusinesses, and a path to homeownership. And I urge all students to join me in the effort to raise awareness of the importance of community economic development. And I'll be signing this now here. We have representatives from NECO here, and I'd invite them to come forward and speak to you about their program if you would. Put you on the spot?
I certainly wasn't super prepared, but I did bring some numbers. My name's Amy Hamilton. Thank you so much for having me. I am the Opportunity Work Supervisor for our Clackamas County Office, and I brought our foreclosure team along with me. So we've got three foreclosure counselors and a counseling assistant that came along to support us tonight. But anyway, thank you so much for having us here today. It's a special day for NECO specifically because today marks our 35th anniversary as an organization, so a pretty big deal for us company-wide. But NECO in Oregon City is celebrating our two-year anniversary this month, I think it is. We don't have a specific date on that right now, but this month. So that's pretty exciting. Although, we've only been here for two years. We've been working in Clackamas County and Oregon City for a few more than that, and I was thinking about that today as I was preparing to come down here and decided to pull some members. And they were pretty amazing even for me, and made me feel better about us all being so exhausted as we are. So since we've been working here, we've served 3,300 families in the Clackamas County area, a lot of them specifically in Oregon City. That was the bigger numbers, and that seemed like an awful lot. I look at our file room and what it is. But it was accurate, and I had double-checked it. And I went and did a little bit of a breakdown to see what it was we were doing with those 3,300 families. And 2,248 of them have gotten assistance through the mortgage payment assistance programs through the state, and we are the intake agency for Clackamas County on that. 1,050, a little over 1,050 homeowners have come to us for foreclosure avoidance counseling and financial education through our classes and one-on-one counseling. And just under 200 of those families were right from Oregon City proper. So that was pretty exciting for me to see, for making a difference here. So thanks for making us feel so welcome, and we really love being part of this community. Can't wait for the foreclosure crisis to hopefully wind on down a bit, and let us bring in some new, exciting, fun projects.
Yeah.
For a person that wasn't prepared to make a present.
You did extremely well. Well, thank you.
Let me go ahead and give you this copy, and we'll have one for our own.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for all you do.
We have another proclamation to read. This, we're declared July 2014 is Park and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are integral part of communities throughout this country, including Oregon City, and whereas our parks and recreation are virtually important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contribute to the economic, environmental well-being of the community and region, whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all our citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide negative buffers, excuse me, provide vegetated buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Oregon City recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, and whereas Oregon City has numerous parks, open spaces, and natural areas owned by Oregon City, Clackamas County metro neighborhoods, I will be signing and do proclaim July 14th is Park and Recreation Month, and sign this. And I think we're going to actually take some action tonight regarding semester planning. Is that correct? Of a couple of our parks. Or just make a comment, our Parks and Recreation staff do a, I was gonna say yeoman's job, I should say yeoperson's job, because we have many women that work in that program, and actually are understaffed, and even so, we're able to provide the support as, to the degree we can. We recognize that we have to make greater investment in our park systems. People who've moved into new communities here, even though they have parks designated, it takes a while to get those parks in place. And they are extremely important. I had the honor of serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a couple of years, and they do a tremendous job. And I'd like you, Scott, in making this proclamation, to tell your staff how much we appreciate their effort and work. They do a tremendous job, not only in our parks, our swimming pool, our Pioneer Community Center, which serves the seniors, and programs that you offer, that have, some of them are very new. We've had the, we've had the concerts in the park for some time, but I think this is the third year for the movies in the park, which, which has been very successful. And so, and we, that's gonna start up in August, isn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah. And concerts in the park?
Um...
Is this coming Thursday? No, not this coming, but a week from this.
A week from, that's correct.
That's right, after the 4th of July weekend. So
At its new location.
We've got a great slide, we've got a new location. It's gonna be at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. And it's been a very successful program, and we'll be able to actually accommodate more people at that particular site than we've been at the Carnegie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll pass that along to our staff for sure. I appreciate that.
Thank you. For that, I think this is the time, is it not, for citizen comments? Yes. We'll take citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda. We ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, if you will. When you come up, please identify whether or not you live in Oregon City. Amy Anderson Fields and Jeff Fields, would you want to
Good evening. My name is Amy Anderson Fields. My husband Jeff Fields. We live in Oregon City, in the incorporated part of the city. We're here basically to ask a question of the commission. We have a neighbor who last year put on a fireworks display with largely illegal fireworks, rolls of firecrackers that took almost 10 minutes to go off, M-80s that rattled the windows in our house, the kind of things that go up over our roof. And this went on last year for nine and a half hours. After six hours, I called the police. They did nothing. At seven hours, I called the police. They did not come out until 1:30 in the morning, when our neighbor turned on his stereo, and they told me, oh, well, now it's a noise complaint. Frankly, I think an M-80 rattling the windows in my house is noise, but apparently that doesn't count. My husband contacted the chief of police a week or two ago requesting information about what our rights are, and we were told essentially that we are expected to deal with the situation ourselves, that they will not come out. Personally, I don't like them, but I also recognize that people are going to go out there and they're going to do this. But after nine and a half hours, I think that's really pushing the limits. A number of our neighbors are former military. I don't know if any of them have PTSD. One of my dogs hid under the bed. My service dog ran frantically through the house for most of that evening. One of my cats was catatonic, and my gray parrot was yelling, be quiet, damn it, you're hurting my ears. I don't know what we can do. But I tried to talk to the neighbor a few days ago, and he asked me if I was complaining. I told him yes, at which point he proceeded to talk over me, walk in little circles around me rather frantically, much like my dog had done the year before, and then he went back in his house. He was playing with firecrackers a few days ago, and a new person in the neighborhood stuck his head out the door and asked him to stop. His reaction was to go and get more fireworks and more firecrackers to light off. We are not dealing with a reasonable man here. When we first met this neighbor, he told us that his driver's license was revoked for DUIs, so he was driving his mother's car so that the police would not know it was him. And I think I'm out of time, almost.
You're, you're, you continue speaking yourself.
My name is Jeff Fields. This is my 14th month in Oregon City. Sorry, I almost said Ocean City, but I'm from Maryland. Sorry, I almost said Ocean City, but I'm from Maryland. I think Ocean City after 50 some odd years of living there. I enjoy the town. Just a little background on me, I worked for the United States Senate Sergeant-at-Arms. I was the telecommunications manager for the United States Capitol Police. I worked with many of the security agencies in DC and so forth and so on, and I know that the police have a difficult job. I want to thank Chief Band for getting back to me real fast, and even you on a different subject, so I really appreciate that. That doesn't happen in Maryland, so I'm happy. However, this thing with the fireworks, I mean, I can go down a number of your nuisance ordinances and just check off, but you know, this is something, even if we could just get the police to roll through every couple of hours or something, but like my wife said, nine and a half hours, and no one on my street can go out because we're on fire watch, so, because of the aerial fireworks. And we find tons of debris from last year in the backyard, so you know, it's been dry, so everybody stays home. So just wanted to bring that up to you.
I know the police got flooded, and yours, of course, is not the only area in which our fireworks are going off, which I assume is one of the problems, but I don't know if you wanted to take time to comment at all, chief, or speak to them at a later time.
You know, the fourth is, I'll tell you personally, I can't stand the fourth.
Me too, me too.
We sit at home, you know, our dog hates it, and it's, I can't get to sleep. It's the same. I understand personally. The problem professionally is figuring out what is, who, because there are people who are on the side of the fence that we should go out and, and it comes up every year, what are you going to do? And you're right, there are ordinances that say that they can't, there's prohibitions on these kind of fireworks. The problem is, for us, is we need to be consistent in whatever we do. So if we're going to enforce one, we're going to enforce every one. And the problem with doing that is a couple of things. One, there's a million complaints. So when you go out to investigate a complaint and somebody says, "Hey, that neighbor lit off a bottle rocket." So you go over and talk to that guy, and he says, "No, that was this neighbor." So you're trying to figure out exactly who lit it off. The other, there's two other problems. And one of them, which I talked about in my email, that was an example that a few years ago was the bail that broke the camel's back. We had an officer went to a good neighborhood, big, huge party. Half the people were sober and half were lit up. And you've got an officer coming in, talking to people about fireworks, a couple of guys get in her face, start hollering at her. Pretty soon, it's a really tense thing, and we have cops coming from far and wide, all over the county, to come because there was a major, major incident with a lot of drunk people who normally would be just fine. And at that point, we said, "No more, because somebody's going to get hurt." That was a really bad scene that everybody who works at our department remembers that day, because it just could have gone really bad. The other problem is, on 4th of July, like a lot of other holidays, people drink, they have a good time, and so the volume of calls that we have of other things, of fights and disputes and domestics and crashes, a lot of DUI stuff going on, we just need to prioritize. So it, I hate the answer that I have to give you that, "Sorry, we just can't do it." It's, I hate giving people that answer, I really do. But in the grand scheme of things, even though it's not a good answer, I believe that we're doing the right thing for the community. I know it doesn't seem like it, but knowing everything, I think it's the best option for us. And I know that's a very mediocre answer, but it's the only one I can give you.
I have a question. Are you in a neighborhood association?
I'm, so new, our actual neighborhood off of Maple Lane, we don't have homeowners association. I'm still trying to learn the politics of the area.
Yeah, you have a neighborhood.
And just talking to the other neighbors that have been there for years, they've never mentioned anything like that.
Yeah, I wonder if your neighborhood association, if you mention something to them, maybe they...
Doesn't appear to be one.
The only thing is, he spends thousands, it's professional, you haven't, you've been to, if you see his display, other professional displays would be jealous. I mean, we get nine and a half hours of the real good stuff.
So it won't be a matter of, you know, who did it, because I can almost guarantee you it will still be going on.
Oh, and the city sends a street sweeper the next morning and cleans it up, just our streets, so obviously there's no somebody that can get his, the street sweeper to come in and clean up our streets.
Yeah, they were out there at 7:00 AM, but that doesn't get what's in the yard.
Yeah.
That would be the Caulfield Neighborhood Association off of Maple Lane? Yeah. Caulfield Neighborhood Association. That's not a homeowners association. It's actually, every, I think every resident is covered by a neighborhood association. We oftentimes have people coming in here representing the neighborhood associations. Yeah, I had a hunch that was your answer, and...
I have one little thing I can, and I regret, I want to be careful saying this because I don't want 100 people sending me emails saying, "We'll do a preemptive strike in my neighborhood." One thing I can try, I'll email you, and maybe we can go have a little contact upfront and maybe minimize the, maybe make the nine hours, two hours or something, I don't know. We'll go have a conversation.
That would help.
And maybe we can get somewhere before, beforehand.
Yeah, I just spent $80 on sedatives for my animals.
Not including mine.
And there's nothing I can do about it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And of course, you called me up and talked to me about the same incident, and you said you didn't have a problem with an hour or two, but the length of time that it went on.
I mean, frankly, I'd rather that it not go on at all, but I'm realistic enough to know that it will. But you know, it started at four, it did not end until 1:30.
That's very long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jonathan Stone.
I think there was a compliment in there about public works that just kind of got overlooked. Good evening.
Hi, Jonathan.
How are you? Jonathan Stone, Main Street Oregon City resident and director of, sorry, come on.
Who are you now, Jonathan? Which hat do you have on?
The Main Street hat, so, but I had in my mind, I was going to say I was a resident of Oregon City as well as the director of Main Street Oregon City. That sounds better. Anyways, the reason I'm here tonight is to make you guys aware of the First City Celebration and some of our plans, but more specifically to invite your participation in our, what I hope will be a viral marketing campaign. As some of you know, one of the big pushes that we're doing for the First City Celebration this year is to bring home the message that Oregon City was the first city, it's not just the name of an event. And so with that, I'm sort of ticking off the list of things that people might be able to interact with. The coin toss bubbled to the top as an opportunity for us to use technology, to get as much onsite, offsite, forehand, day-of engagement, and that hopefully would be more interesting than just your average city street fair in the eyes of the news media. So with all the firsts that we have, with all of the history that we have, probably one of the more interesting things that Portland might care about is that their name was determined in our downtown. And so what we're doing is the coin toss, almost 170 years later again. And the way that people can participate is by texting in heads or tails to 50555. And what that does is it registers a count, and by 8:00 PM, so that lumber's live now, but by 8:00 PM the day of the event, we will look at the count and decide which side of the coin is heads, or which side of the coin is Portland. And so...
Wait a minute, hold. You're going to look at the count, and then you're going to determine the count is Portland?
No, 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 which side of the coin?
I'm a statistician. My expectation is that... This is an honest coin toss.
This is an honest coin toss. I promise I won't wait the coin.
Don't rig that toss.
No, what people are voting for is to help us decide which side of the coin will be Portland, and then it's an honest coin toss beyond that. And so that's the engagement part, is is it heads or tails for Portland? And then we'll flip the coin, and then who knows, maybe we will rename Portland Boston for a day.
I'll be happy to sign the proclamation.
It's going to be tails. Portland's going to be tails. Have you invited any of the Portland commissioners?
I wanted to invite you all first to participate. We have, Carol has reached out to Representative Brent Barton, and he has agreed to reach out to the governor.
Nice.
For a possible proclamation on part of the governor to help us with making our unofficial, potential unofficial official renaming.
The state is your...
The state that didn't exist.
State is irrelevant. State is irrelevant. I did not. I tried to warn you, Jonathan. What year did the, what year did the coin toss occur?
1845.
45.
So the territorial boundaries hadn't even been decided.
So, but...
This is a new day.
This is a new day. We're moving forward.
And I trust that none of this has to do with the fact that I just moved from Boston. But I hope you guys are able to participate the day of the event. The 8:00 PM is when the coin toss will happen, and that is at the same time as the headlining concert, so we hope it is a reason to draw as much attention as possible to Oregon City and downtown Oregon City, and that as long as we continue to spread the word, and invite you to text now, 50555, heads or tails.
This says, excuse me, this says 51555.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
That's an error.
So it's supposed to be 5-0.
I hope I didn't make that mistake on the...
Hopefully you didn't print too many of these.
No, 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 these are fresh off my printer. Oh, no, sorry, 51555 is correct.
Okay, so one is good. Okay, all right. So would you like to, would you like to tell us the date and time of your event?
July 26th. The event begins at 11:00 AM and it ends at 9:00 PM.
Nice.
So we're looking at more artists downtown than ever, more wineries downtown than ever, more businesses participating than ever, so we're hoping that it's going to be a great event, bigger and better than it was last year. So 51555, heads or tails.
And the actual coin toss is at 8:00 PM.
And the actual coin toss is at 8:00 PM.
And what day are you renaming Portland for?
Wait a minute.
That could cause us problems with stationery and stuff, you know.
Maybe we'll choose a weekend day.
We don't know Portland's going to be renamed. I mean, that's the point of the coin toss.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
But I hope to have a lot more to share in the near future about what we're doing downtown, but I thought this was a fun opportunity to learn about the event and participate.
That's going to be fun.
I'm texting right now.
I'm...
It should send you an autoresponder.
Okay.
Let's see if technology works. No texting during class, Rock.
It's summer.
It's summer.
President, President Trista?
Yes, I just...
You had a very good, I noticed you.
I get known in meetings.
You got, I believe you have a couple of other staff members, and take this opportunity, please, to introduce them if you would.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to introduce, use the microphone, thank you.
Yeah, we record it.
It's my pleasure to introduce Bob Cochran, our dean of campus services and facilities. He works closely with your staff here, and it's all great. We have Dean Shelley Perini, she's college advancement in the foundation. She works a lot with each of you, I think, over the years, as well as anything around public affairs and our foundation, that half a million dollars in scholarship and building. And then Sean Pollak, who is our executive staff to the board and to me. And let's see, am I missing somebody? And I'll pick on William is probably an honorary.
Thanks, I think so.
And I'm always recruiting, so any honorary staff members are always welcome.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take this moment actually to invite William Gifford forward and make an announcement, I believe, about your wife and a recognition that she received. It's an important one.
Yes.
I would like to give you the opportunity to do so.
My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. Whoops. There it is. I wasn't prepared to do that.
You know what it is.
And yes, and I'll tell you why, is because the honor that was bestowed on my wife Joyce Gifford is for the 2014-15 school year. There currently is an existing person with the same title, so I don't want to upstage them, but as of the new school year, Joyce Gifford has been selected as the substitute teacher of the year by the Oregon State Substitute Teachers Association.
Nice, that's very cool. That's very cool.
That's a done deal, unlike the naming of Portland or Boston, that's what'd be coming up.
Heads, heads, text heads. Just saying, just saying.
Tails, go tails.
Yeah, I did. Sorry.
Darn it.
Tails, go tails. I don't know how funny it is this one.
We have nobody else on for citizens communication? Nope, not on mine. Just a minute here. Bob, are you on? Bob LaSalle?
No.
He's on mine.
No, not on.
That's all right.
Not on adoption of the...
Yeah, what's on the floor, and he's not on the floor. With that, does anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda and adopt the agenda?
I would like to pull 7A from the consent agenda, please.
Okay, we'll pull 7A and the consent agenda and have it as a separate discussion after our other items.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
The first item is the second reading of ordinance 141007, proposed zone change from R-10 single-family to our H-8 single-family and a 27-lot subdivision located between Ames Street and Holcomb Boulevard. It's been through the planning commission, it's gone through a first reading, we've already had the public testimony for this particular item. Is there anything else more to report, unless it's a brief summary of what it is?
The planning commission recommended approval for the zone change from R-10 to R-8 and a 27-lot subdivision located between Ames and Holcomb Boulevard. The city commission did approve the first reading at their last meeting, so we are bringing forward the second reading.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Time for discussion for us? Because I didn't, okay. Well, I went out there before the meeting tonight and took a look, and as you all know, I'm extremely familiar with that area. I drove that road every day for 32 years. And I think that there were some things that weren't addressed. They were alluded to in the meeting. I did watch the entire 2 hours and 46 minutes of that. But Bob LaSalle brought up the traffic problems there, and the intersection of Holcomb Road and School Road are a dangerous intersection. It's dangerous before this traffic change comes about to allow more cars through there. Certainly, is it 25 or 27 homes?
27.
27. You can expect at least two trips a day out of each home. I don't know if they're all going to go out that way, but you can expect a lot of trips, more trips coming through there, coming into a blind corner of sorts. Even though the traffic impact studies showed no appreciable increase in traffic, I find that really hard to believe with that many homes going in. And I think it's rather irresponsible to say that it will not generate more traffic congestion at that intersection. Also, the hydrology of this area has demonstrated repeatedly extreme hazards. In 1996, it was an example of, and I don't believe, I don't remember, John, if you said it was a 25 or a 20-year storm history that we're talking about in that area. I can't remember which it was.
I don't recall.
Okay. But in 96 was an example of this storm history, which caused a very, very large landslide in that area. We were without a road for almost a year. All of the water from that ditch that we're talking about drains into the area that slid off of Forsyth Road, on both sides of Forsyth Road. It is now, where the slide happened in 96, the edge of that slide is very close to the curve of the road at this point. So I believe that injecting additional water into this surface area is not a good idea. And the third point was equating lot size, I heard this comment made, equating lot size to hard surface displacement wasn't equal, that a 10,000-square-foot lot would have a larger home on it, so it would be displacing more than an 8,000-square-foot lot and all that. I don't believe that that... I don't believe that that's a valid argument. You can put a tiny little house on a ten thousand square foot lot, or you can take up a whole eight thousand square foot lot with a big, big home. So I don't believe that that's a valid consideration for displacement, water displacement. I don't think you can actually know that until you see plans and construction taking place, so I would just like to enter those things into consideration and let people know that I have very big concerns about what additional building will do in that area.
I'm going to pause a question if I may. If there was not a requested zone change and they went ahead with a subdivision, what would have been the mechanism?
It would have been reviewed, assuming no variances, if it was just a subdivision, as a type-two decision.
And we wouldn't see it except on appeal, is that right?
Correct.
So what was before us was a subdivision in terms of making the change that added two additional houses to that. If you watched the whole thing, you realize that we actually put in some requirements on those two houses, so it was, I mean, I watched the planning commission meeting of the ninth. And one of the people that voted in opposition on the planning commission, actually, the drainage was the main concern on that person's part, it was also the main concern on my part. And, but it came to us because it was in fact a change in...
Zoning.
In zoning, and added just two additional houses to the, what would have been there before.
Correct. They reduced the number of lots proposed in the subdivision lower than what could actually be built there with the zone change.
Well, there's other considerations to be made in that area right now. The area outside of the city limits is having homes built on it. So you're concentrating more than just this one subdivision.
I assume that's the decisions being made by the county.
Well, I don't know if that lot is, I assume that lot was outside of the city.
And this brings up something I just wanted to confirm with Tony. One of the issues that we have is that you held a hearing at the last meeting, closed the record.
Right.
And we have the record that's before us now.
Yeah.
We have a hundred and twenty-day deadline. I don't know when that is, but I believe, if I understood the planning manager correctly, there is, the discussion of the homes adjacent to it wasn't part of the record.
Of the original discussion, okay.
Yeah.
Just so people know, we can only take evidence that's been presented at the planning commission level at that point. That doesn't prevent us, of course, from having discussions in our effort here to...
That's correct.
And I recall that slide. I think it was several months. Clock is sort of right, it's closed.
So I have a question. I went through the packet. So after the last hearing, the additional requirements of them working on that ditch and increasing that capacity, that is, that's in there, correct?
That is correct.
So that will happen.
There were three items.
Yeah.
Could you just go over them? One had to do with water from the ruse. The other had to do with the ditch.
Yeah, French drain.
There were some concessions made during that meeting to change the scope a little bit.
Correct. So the additional conditions dealt with, the applicant was going to make improvements to the existing drainage ditch that would receive, that's receiving the water that's currently in the county, that then drains near Forsyth Road.
Right.
So they would be doing additional excavation and... Armoring of the side of the drainage. They would also be, at a minimum, they will, two lots will be disconnected from the public storm system, and they'll install, and they will instead utilize French drain sumps or other onsite water detention measures approved by the city, so that would then be consistent with if it was just, if it was all R ten, they could have gotten twenty-five lots on there, so then they've taken two out of the system to be consistent with the previous zoning of R ten. And then the third one was that all homes in the subdivision will maintain an R ten subdivision, front yard setback regardless of their zoning. So the R eight properties will be meeting the R ten setback, which is five feet larger than the R eight.
You go over the first one again, I didn't...
The first one is that, so the storm system drains into the ditch that runs along Sears' property. North to Forsyth Road, and then it goes under Forsyth.
Exactly.
And then down into, down towards the clack. So the applicant is going to come in, they have worked with Sears, the property owner, and they're going to excavate to add some additional capacity to that receiving ditch, and then also armor the side of it to reduce erosion in that ditch.
So that is county, right? The ditch is county?
Correct. It's outside of our city limits.
So you're not just working with Sears, you're working with Johnsons and Woods? And what happens across the street with Eliges?
We are, the condition is working on the Sears property...
Just the Sears?
To Forsyth Road.
Because there's four other pieces there?
Just as an additional question, we're requiring a developer to do things on a piece of property that is not within our city limits. Our ability to do that is based on what? We don't have a jurisdiction there per se.
The applicant brought it forward as a remedy to try to address the concerns of the commission and the neighbor.
Yes, but they're going to have to seek, I presume, permission from the property owner themselves to do so.
Correct.
They'll have to get that permission. If they don't, they won't be able to fulfill that condition.
Yeah.
And what I'm saying is there's more than one property owner.
Understood, and if they can't fulfill the condition...
Have the other property owners been consulted at all that you know of?
I'm aware of.
I think they were looking at the property owner at the outfall of the detention pond. They're building a detention pond, but that detention pond also directs water to an already existing detention pond. And the property owner in question in the county was the recipient of the outfall of that detention pond. And I assume that's Sears.
So the property owner to the west of Sears property, so you have the ditch, you have Sears right here, you have the ditch, you have this property owner. This property owner came in and testified, they had concerns about erosion, undermining their fence and flooding their property. So that property owner is obviously aware. They were part of the hearing, Sears is obviously aware. Folks on the north side of Forsyth, I'm not sure if they've been contacted or not.
Yes.
I will continue to be a no vote, because I do not feel that they need to go to an R eight setting, so I just want to make that stipulation.
I would just make the comment, and it's a guess on my part, what we've done in terms of the stormwater, you've got the additional driveways and sidewalks with ready water, but having taken the roof capacity off the stormwater line, we may have, we may have mitigated the effect of that over the equivalent of one house on a ten, a ten thousand acre lot. Do I hear a motion?
You have a citizen, Bob LaSalle, has requested...
I don't know, they were taking testimony.
The record was closed, the hearing was closed at the last meeting.
I mean, of course, we have a voter here, we have a voter here in terms of this motion, and we had every reason to hear her concern, she wasn't at the meeting, but the public record is closed. I mean, if the commission voted to open it, that'd be problematic, if it resulted in the change in the ordinance. We could do so, but then we run awry of the hundred and twenty-day limit, so...
Issues that could arise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll prevent you to speak, but I don't think we can use the testimony for anything.
It's not testimony for anything that would affect anything that you suggested.
Come on for it.
Can we maybe vote on the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if you want to hear, because we need to vote on what the record is.
Yes.
So, and before we vote on anything, we have to have a motion to vote on.
I move to approve a second reading of ordinance number fourteen dash one zero zero seven, proposed zone change from R ten to single-family R eight.
A second?
Press your buttons.
We'll have the first, we'll have the second reading.
We got the reading. Ordinance number fourteen dash one zero zero seven, an ordinance amending title seventeen zoning, chapter seventeen oh six oh two oh of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code, by changing a portion of the property identified as Clackamas County Map two dash two E dash twenty-one DC dash zero one three zero zero, Clackamas County Map two dash two E dash twenty-one DC dash one, zero one six zero zero, and Clackamas County Map two dash two E twenty-eight AB dash oh one six oh oh from R ten, single-family dwelling district to R eight, single-family dwelling district, and approving a twenty-seven lot subdivision, Oregon City Planning File ZC fourteen dash oh one and TP fourteen dash oh one.
You did it one more time.
They stumbled on the same numbers.
Report, please. Three in favor and two opposed, the motion passes. Can I come, Mr. LaSalle, do you want to come forward now?
My name is Bob LaSalle.
One moment. Did you have a question, Nancy?
I was just wondering if, is he submitting more information for the records?
This is not part of the...
The decision is made, this is not part of the official record in the decision.
It's just information, that's all it is. My name is Bob LaSalle, I live in Oregon City, and I'd like to suggest that the SDCs that go along with the development of this property be assigned as an improvement SDC, which is in the Oregon City Municipal Code, and you're getting a copy of that now, which allows the money to be spent on future solving problems. If there's future problems with the drainage, perhaps this would be a way to solve that problem, is these SDCs would be set aside, or maybe a percentage of the SDCs be set aside to take care of any future drainage problems. Because the drainage problems, of course, were the biggest concern of both the planning commission and yourselves. So this may be a way now, I don't know if it's legal to do that, it seems to me like it would be, but just simply a suggestion, because those SDCs will be right around six hundred thousand dollars.
These are Public Works SDCs, I can let, I can let, Mr. Lewis, we do have listed projects that I think SDCs are directed to, it doesn't preclude us from adding additional projects to it.
That's correct. I'm not sure if the six hundred thousand number you're listing is stormwater SDCs or SDCs in general, but...
Typical single-family residence system development charges that I got from the Public Works.
Right, but I think you're including transportation, water, sewer, stormwater.
Oh, yeah, right.
So only part of that could be directed to the storm...
And it's a pretty small piece, but I would also say, you know, SDCs are, the way they're estimated and the way they're allocated is based on a financial list of projects, and I doubt, I'm sure this one isn't, because it's not in the city. That's not to say at some point in time we couldn't modify that list, but we'll probably do that when we do a stormwater master plan update. And we'll look hard at both the capital needs of the city and prioritize those, kind of like what we're going to do with the sewer pretty soon here, and figure out what that project list should be, how high those or low those SDCs should be to cover that list. And so while, you know, SDCs cover, you know, capacity improvement needs, it's also based on a list that we kind of approve, or we, you approve.
You did it, didn't you?
You approve. It's not kind of, it's you do approve that list, so. And that list can be amended through resolution, and we do that from time to time, too.
Thanks for the idea.
I'll keep throwing that in.
I also want to caution about the idea of dedicating particular SDCs to particular projects. Once that starts happening, you lose the ability to prioritize through the CIP as...
Yeah, I think state law prohibits that, doesn't it?
With that, we have an ordinance for introduction. Fourteen one zero zero eight, amending title twelve, street sidewalks and public spaces, chapter sixteen, public parks, camping prohibited, to authorize the city manager to allow camping in city parks. And that's Scott Archer, I presume?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, as you're likely aware, camping is currently prohibited in city parks, except for the designated RV type of camping, RV vehicles in the camping area there at Clackamas Park. And as you know, we on occasion receive requests from groups or organizations for special events, or ceremonies, or the like, to have a, to camp in our parks. Mostly the requests come to us for Clackamas Park. It's possible that we could get other types, but these are, while they're infrequent, they're typically significant ceremonies or groups that, you know, in fact, the commission has made some exemptions through emergency ordinance in the past and that type of thing. So we have proposed to you an amendment to the ordinance that would allow the city manager, or would give the city manager the authority to allow camping for special requests, the requests would need to be made, and the city manager would have the authority to make that exemption on occasions. And again, these are relatively infrequent, at least at this time, and for things that the commission has expressed some support for. In fact, the commission asked that we bring this forward to you at some point. I would like to let you know that this was reviewed by the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and they're supportive of this change. What the ordinance amendment does not do is it does not give us a policy that directs exactly how this decision is made, which is sort of the tricky part. Mr. Kabizma might have some comments about the legal ramifications of that, but at least for now, it's not a significant issue, though it could be. But what the Parks and Rec Committee came up with, and they wanted me to bring forward as part of this recommendation, is that they would like to help develop the guidelines of how these types of decisions would be made. So this amendment simply just provides that authority, and then we'll work on some specific guidelines, but right now it's so limited in terms of the number of these that we get that it's, there's not, it's not a significant issue in terms of, you know, timing or anything like that, so.
If I could just follow up on Mr. Archer's comments, and the concern is that any allowance of camping is going to have to be non-discriminatory, and because a request for a particular group comes in that is important for the cultural history of the city is important, but there might be somebody who comes in and requests that, for various reasons, people might not want to see that group camping in the park.
Yes.
And how to make that distinction, it's a difficult needle to thread. Typically, if you open it, you got to open it tall, and that's going to be part of the discussion.
If I might, we've got various designations in terms of which parks are which. We've got parks that really qualifies, regional parks, we got neighborhood parks, is that true?
Right.
And these are classified. I guess the issue for me would be neighborhood parks. I could see, in a given neighborhood, maybe they want to camp out of something within the neighborhood itself, but if this passes and as you develop the guidelines, I presume they're going to be park-type specific.
I would, that would be, from the staff perspective, that would be a recommendation. I would only be looking at, I would only suggest that we would designate, you know, regional or larger types of parks where it doesn't have that type of impact, where you're camping right in somebody's backyard or something like that, so. And again, the requests that we receive at the current time are very few, but to my recollection, all have been at Clackamas Park. So, you know, that would be kind of the main focus. We could take a look at some other types of facilities, but that would be a significant part of the discussion, is the type of, the type or the location of the park where we would be looking at that.
Since I'm not going to have a commission voice much longer, I'll use it at this point. We have had recommendations of river users having access to a camping facility. We, of course, have the recreational park, we do have an area immediately north of there, and... and I think it would be, I think it would be great if we could actually have a set aside in Clackamas Park for, for, for river users, people that can bring their kayaks in and set up there, one of those things I just throw out at this point in the game, under the assumption this ordinance is going to pass, but, and we, I, I think Mr. DeWolff is actually throwing that out at one point or another, but the falls are going to be a great attraction for people coming up the river and so forth, and to have a place for people that are not necessarily driving to or coming on bicycle, actually using the river to come to this place. If we could actually have a, kind of a park facility managed in the same way probably you do the RV with maybe even hotel motel taxes being, coming out of the revenue source for that purpose, so I'm, I'm just throwing that out at this point in the game, not expecting any response from you.
You got it.
I got a whole list.
I'll start it off.
They're all people from up here, there's nobody from out there. Finish your call.
Yes, hearing that-
What city are you residing in? Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oregon City. Hearing that PrAC will set up guidelines is, is a huge deal, but not knowing those guidelines, it's hard to make a decision, really hard to make a decision.
I agree.
I also have the same caution with the neighborhood parks, I don't think camping should be in neighborhood parks, there's neighbors, people are trying to sleep, people have kids, they have animals that'll bark, I mean, all sorts of things, I mean, going down that path is, if a designation of available parks upon request, like Clackamas Park, if it was, you know, written so that was the designation, then that might be one thing, and then having the capacity to handle that, as Mayor Neely is talking about, but there's just, doesn't seem to be enough information, has PrAC talked about guidelines, I mean, have they hammered out?
Commissioner, I can, might be able to help with that, I can't help with what PrAC has talked about, but I can help with what the city attorney and I have talked about. What we want to make, and if you want to restrict this just to Clackamas Park-
Yes.
I, I think that would be a, maybe a wise thing to start with, just so you start this in a very small way. What I'm interested in is making sure that I can consistently make decisions on these guidelines that are legally defensible, that also are consistent with the community's values and the directions of the commission. So what we could do is work with PrAC and the city attorney's office and develop the, the set of what the guidelines are going to be, because we need to develop these criteria and make sure that they're going to hold up if we get challenged, because my recollection is last summer we had a Native American group that we wanted to allow to, to stay there overnight, and then we had some concerns about how we would do that, we had to bring that to you, and I think even when you passed it, we had some concerns about it. So the city attorney suggested that we get authority from you to work on these guidelines, and, and I'm, I think we're fine restricting that to Clackamas Park, so that could be part of your motion tonight if you so inclined.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mum.
Thank you. Are you down there? I have concerns about the slippery slope also, restricting to Clackamas Park is one thing, I want to see the guidelines first personally, because I don't feel comfortable passing this and then getting the guidelines, and you guys have to think about this broadly, it's not just the tribes that could request it, like we did have before us, it could be, I want to have a medical marijuana group come in and hold an overnight rally, or a homeless rally, I mean, you have to be very, very thoughtful and very, very careful, and I really am not in favor of voting in this, for this tonight.
Commissioner Rock.
Well, I'm, I'm feeling the same way, I'm not comfortable with this at all, and, and one of the major concerns for me is the expense, you know, where do we come up with the money to clean up after campers, it's going to generate garbage and all, all sorts of things, so where do we come up with the money to take care of this? And then also speaking from knowing some of the things going on in Portland, you know, we're constantly being asked by Occupy-
Yes.
To Occupy various parks for camping, and we don't want to go there, so I'm not comfortable with this either.
Commissioner Smo.
Let me think for a second, okay, so, yeah, this, this reminds me to some degree of the food cart debate, in where we were allowing, we basically had food carts in the city, but not a, you know, not an ordinance that allowed it and those kind of things, and, and there's, you know, huge concerns either way on this. Of course, I look at it from the sense that we have people parking, camping in our parks throughout the year for various events that happen all the time, and anytime a carnival comes into Oregon City, guess what, they're sleeping in the park. So I, I kind of, so, and, you know, we have to be careful, you know, there's certain events and certain activities that take place, and just at the C H P meeting the other day, we were talking about future plans for what they want to see on the interpretive center site. We used to allow scout groups camp at the end of the Oregon Trail, I mean, just like they do at Omsi overnight, or various places like that, so we have to think about those kind of events as well. Weighing that with the legalities, I think, is, is, is the discussion that's going to be the real problem. I, I kind of hate to ask this question, but how do we have an RV park? How do we, how have we always, how have we separated the RV park from this ordinance that has always existed in the parks? And my, I'm, I'm assuming I know the answer, which is we just haven't really dealt with that, I mean, it, it never occurred to us to deal with it, but I have a feeling that it's, so, you know, we're already letting people camp in Clackamas Park, and, you know, then this additional special events, I think, is an important one. That means anytime we have a living history encampment in the city, a historic city like Oregon City, or a Native American encampment, that we have to think about those things. So it is, it's an important thing to, I think, work out. I don't think it's going to be an easy one to work out. I also kind of still want to work out the food cart thing, but whatever. We can do this one first.
You got two more years, Rocky, you got two more years.
No, it's not history. So I, I mean, I'm in support of it, but I, but I also have concerns, so I don't know, I don't know, what to do with it, is it-
To be perfectly honest, Commissioner, I'm not, I'm not opposed if, if somebody's, if I just have to say no, we don't permit that, and if Scott has to say no, we don't permit that, that's what we usually do.
Yeah.
I'm not eager to-
Well, yeah, but we have an RV park.
Well, I think there's, I think what you also have is an ordinance establishing that RV park.
Well, I don't know that, that's my, that's my question.
I haven't looked into that, but I'm pretty sure we're covered on that.
I mean, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind seeing a work session of some sort with PrAC to start talking about it a little bit more, because keep in mind, we have a film company that's, you know, two blocks away-
Right.
With movie trailers-
Right.
That are camping out all night.
But they're not in a park.
They're not in a park.
Well, true, but they have been in the park before, I mean, they've been filming at Clackamas, Clackamas Park in past years, and, so this is something that, you know, it is a few times a year, but it is happening, and it is something that we should have, you know, a solution for.
Can I tag something onto that?
Sure.
How do we allow-
You should put your name on here, though.
I'm sorry. Jumping ahead of the mayor.
I'll, I'll allow it.
How do we allow, because I just read that we had got the four new people, I believe, to patrol the parks like Claremont and those parks.
The host.
Our park host?
Yeah, so how do we allow that?
Well, that's, and, go ahead, Bill.
I was going to, you know, part of the problem is that the, the code is not a model of clarity in this, this case, what we have is-
Please, Michelle, thank you, Bill, for that.
Twelve sixteen oh four says, "It's unlawful to camp in or upon any sidewalk, street, alley lane, public right of way, public park, or any other place to which a general public has access."
Right.
No camping. Then we go down to subsection D of that same section, it says, "It shall be an affirmative defense to this section that the individual charged had written consent to the person or other authority owning or entitled to possession of the location where the campsite was located."
So that's-
So there's written consent, and, and I think the idea of this, and it may make sense to push this to a work session, I'll, I'll let the city manager, is to try to say, all right, generally no, but we're going to allow it under written rules and have a good, specific, you know, set, and, and rather than, it, it's the type of regulation that maybe may not, might not make sense in the code, because it's going to be more detailed about, you know, how many porta-potties you need, those types of things that-
Who cleans up and who pays.
Who cleans up, what the deposit is, things like that, that might make more sense in something that's, that, that isn't the full code, and, and this was the intent to try to-
Right.
Set that up, and-
We didn't want to codify things like the cleanup deposit and camping and these different rules, because the code, that's, that's just so much detail, we didn't need that for what we were trying to achieve here. Basically, we're looking at the code as the overall document, and then looking at rules to develop policy on how to do this. And if you are interested in, in us continuing to work on that, we could, we could still work on developing the rules, and, and then bring those back, and, and, you know, if you just direct us to go work on the rules, we will do that without, this simply authorizes, what's before you tonight authorizes us to go do that, and we would still bring it back and get approval before they get implemented, but you can also direct us to do that without voting on this tonight.
Yeah.
And if you want us to do that, we will. But I would like to say one more thing about that, which is, if you're reticent to do it at all, it's going to be a waste of your time and resources for us to develop rules like that, if you're really kind of inclined not to do it at all. So I, I just want to make sure we don't spend money doing that if you're not comfortable with it.
I got, I got my name next, so I get to speak to that very question.
Kathy's speak for you.
She's done, she's done.
That's Katie.
I let her speak before me, she, she, she already spoke, so she got a second speak. It sounds like there's already a mechanism, this written authority, and, and, and what I, what that sounds like to me is the city manager can come to us if they're getting a special request, and, and we can perhaps deal with it on an item by item basis, but it should come to us. I think, I think giving you that, that authority without having the guidelines there first puts you in a bad spot.
Yeah.
Because you can make a decision without commission input and something goes wrong.
You're not doing that tonight, that's not what's in front of you, giving me the authority without the rules, what's in front of you is authorizing us to develop the rules.
Okay.
Because I don't want that responsibility.
Yeah.
Trust me.
I think, I think the, I think there's a feeling that we probably should get the input from the PrAC and make decisions on a set of guidelines before we actually have an ordinance. Is that, is that what I'm reading?
So I want to move to table this, fourteen dash three nine one, ordinance for instruction number fourteen dash one zero, one zero eight.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Roth to table the, this before us.
Until we can get the guidelines.
Yep. Aunt Jeanette, it will be.
Rocky's got to decide.
Until we get the guidelines?
Yes.
Which may never happen, but no, I'm kidding.
Well, I think it will happen.
Coming, coming back to your concern, I didn't read that having camping was a bad idea.
Yeah.
It was a case of, I mean, we anticipate tourism is going to be a very, major part of our economy, and I think-
It's going to be increasing, I think.
It's going to be increasing, and I think the demand for that, the kind of facility is going to be there.
And, and you know, we haven't had a lot of the, the requests, and if they are doing it, they're not requesting it, they're doing it. So it's not something that has come up actually since last summer, that's the last time we had, had one of these. So I think Scott, within your work schedule, when you can fit it in, I wouldn't make it a top priority, but obviously, when you can fit that in with PrAC, start working on that with the city attorney, and we'll bring back a draft.
If you got a request coming in, I think this commission has the authority to grant that request.
That's what we did last time, we brought it to you last time.
Yeah.
And we did ask for this.
Yes.
So I think this is a great start, I do.
And I do think it makes sense to have those guidelines so you don't get accused of favoring one group over another group, and-
You can't do that, because you could get in trouble.
Yes.
Thank you, Scott, thank PrAC.
It's an important follow-up to our proclamation declaring July two thousand fourteen as Parks and Recreation Month, we have before us as our next item, to develop us, have a personal service agreement with, for Glen Oak Road Park and Filbert Run Park Master Planning Professional Consulting Services, so, Mr. Archer.
Thank you. We have in our current work plan and also in our budget, the master planning of both the Glen Oak Road and the Filbert Run Park sites, I think that you're familiar with both of those, we've purchased those or acquired those sites over the last probably six or seven years between the two of the parks, and we intend to, it's now on our work plan to complete the master plans of both of those parks, we would like to do that under one consultant agreement, there are a few reasons for doing that, just efficiency purposes, timing, and also we believe we're going to realize some cost savings, for example, if you've got one consultant, one staff meeting will cover, you know, you can work on, on each of the two parks and so forth. We completed a selection process for the consultant services, we had a selection committee that was comprised of staff, representatives from PrAC, and also representatives from each of the two neighborhoods that these two park sites are in, and the outcome of that selection process was that the recommendation was to hire Lango Hansen Landscape Architects, the, all the information that was in your staff report, that was the proposal and outline of the scope of services and, and the costs and all that, and again, the, this is all within our adopted budget, and, in fact, it's under the budget, and if it's, if it's approved, work will begin very soon, and it's about a six-month process we'd be looking at to actually complete the master plans, not counting, not accounting for the, the land use process where we actually go through the adoption, that, that's on top of the six months, and, yeah, so we're just asking for you to approve the personal services agreement with Lango Hansen.
Yeah, before we have discussion, I believe, Tom, do you want to come forward, Tom O'Brien?
Tom O'Brien, Oregon City, on behalf of the Hazel Grove Westling Farms Neighborhood Association, I would like to encourage you to support this and approve it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Polly.
Oh, I just want to say, I know a lot of people have been looking forward to this, and a lot of neighborhoods have been waiting, and appreciate your patience, these things take a long time, but this is exciting, so, and the whole process will be six months, you think, for the master plan?
Approximately, that's, that's the estimated time, and, you know, could, could vary just a little bit, and I, I appreciate that comment, it actually makes me recall something else that I wanted to mention to the commission, which is, just to remind everybody, the, the commission and the public and the neighborhoods, and Mr. O'Brien was also on our selection committee for the Filbert Run area neighborhood, but the master plan does not necessarily mean that the park is going to be immediately developed, but what it does is it gives us a vision for the park, it gives us a, an approximate dollar amount that we're looking at to develop the park based on what the plan becomes, and it gives us, it basically gives us a target and a goal that we can then set out to achieve and attempt to develop the parks as, as soon as is reasonable, and that depends on various factors, funding, prioritization, our ability to get grants, which is part of the consultant's contract, is their ability to help us seek grants, so, yeah, so the process of master planning, separate from actually developing, but at least then we have the vision and the target to, to go after.
Well, yeah, it's a start, and you need the master plan to get the funding, so that's very important.
Move to approve fourteen dash three nine oh, personal service agreement for Glen Oak Road and Filbert Run Park Master Planning Professional Consulting Services.
That was seconded by Commissioner Roth. Report please.
And I thirded. We were like tied there.
The person with, the person with the heaviest finger, the, we have unanimous vote on it, and-
That might be.
What did I say?
She's got longer fingernails, that's it. That's it.
With that, we'll go to Resolution 1416, approving the Second Amendment to the City Commission Rules of Procedure. And this is responsibility of presentation of the city recorder. Nancy I.
That's correct. Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, you have before you proposed amendments to your rules of procedures. As you know, the city charter provides that the commission adopt rules for the governing of its members and of your proceedings, and in March of 2011, you adopted rules for the first time that were beyond the Roberts Rules of Order, which was originally your rules of procedure. Tonight, staff is proposing amendments to put some current practices into the rules that have pretty much been unwritten. I will review the main changes with you, and then welcome your comments. The first proposed change is on page one, section one, and it's adding a statement that says, "The rules are designed to apply to all city boards, committees, and commissions where appropriate." This is being proposed to assist the boards and committees in providing rules for the governance of their meetings. Not all sections of your rules are going to apply to all the boards, but if a board adopts your rules, it will provide guidance for them when they encounter a procedure issue that they don't know how to handle. And again, the statement says "where appropriate." The second proposed change is on page seven, under Citizen Comments. And most of this section that's in red on your ordinance or resolution is its current practice, but it just isn't written in your adopted rules, except for, I'd like to point out, the last two sentences of this section that would be a new procedure for the governing of your proceedings, and that is this portion. It starts with, "If a speaker wishes to give an electronic presentation, the presentation must be delivered to city staff preferably via electronic mail 48 hours prior to the meeting. The citizen's external electronic data device is not permitted to be used on city equipment for security purposes." This procedure is being proposed to help maintain the order and less disruption in your meetings, and also to maintain the security and the integrity of the city's network structure. When you insert a flash drive into the city's laptop system, you don't know where that's come from, and it could be...
Could have a virus there.
All kinds of things. Prior to the start of your meeting, then, staff will download onto the laptop, which we did tonight for the Clackamas Community College presentation, so that when they sit down, it's all up and ready to go, and that's the purpose of having it in advance.
Right.
That doesn't mean that citizens can't bring hard copies of presentations, photographs if they want, and present them that night, but it's just that we need the electronic in advance of the meeting. Again, it's to preserve order and disruption and security. I did survey other cities in the area, and I received eight responses, and of those eight cities, all but two refused to accept a data device into their system. The other two simply haven't encountered the problem yet, or else they have, one of them had used a laptop that wasn't connected to the network, so if something did go wrong, then it would just be that laptop that would have an issue. So that was how they handled it, but they were still in the process of wanting to get a real policy for that. The third proposed change is on page 10, and this is under the section that talks about quasi-judicial and land use hearings. Section nine adds to this section the same requirement of speakers to submit their electronic presentation 48 hours in advance, or, again, this isn't in there, but the hard copies are accepted that evening as well, if the record hasn't been closed, of course. Section 10 makes changes to the timetable for staff reports, for testimony, for rebuttal. The changes are simply to be consistent with the planning commission's times. So I had this conversation with Tony Conkle, and we discussed those times, and this is what we had agreed on, that we would propose to you. The city attorney and the community development director have reviewed these sections and have agreed that they did not interfere with the city code or state land use rules. So other than removal of a reference to Change-In tapes, which was outdated technology, these are the proposed changes, and I welcome your comments.
Well, mine isn't really, I just kind of have a question, when you're talking about outdated language in the code, and I know that we're just going through this thing where we're talking about, we're no longer talking about electronic mail, we're talking about cloud sourcing?
Yeah.
And so you may want to look at the language a little bit, so that it doesn't go out of date next month?
It's true.
Because we will be going to cloud sourcing next Friday.
In Portland, you mean? I don't believe that that's something that's in the plans for Oregon City right now, and again, these are always amendable in the future for you, but...
But it just seems that those things are hap... Because there's also something called Fire Chat coming on?
Okay.
Which is texting without internet connections?
Okay. It's always changing, and, you know, that, I think it's kind of a known thing, that the law is often behind the technology, you know? We can do our best to keep the rules up to date, you know, as...
Commissioner Roth, I wanted to interject. I think that's a great suggestion, but we're going to be considering, if something comes from an electronic device, even if it's in a cloud, it's going to be electronic for us, unless we have some legal challenge that says we can't interpret it that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Good catch, though.
Tom, are you signed up to speak to this? Come forward then.
Once again, Tom O'Brien, Oregon City, remind you to take a look at your Goal Four over here. You want citizen participation, and I have come before you a number of times with large presentations that contain significant amount of bytes of graphics. When I have tried to deal with the planning department and send them large files, they couldn't receive them, because the city's network doesn't allow large files to come in from the citizens. Therefore, the proposals that I'm hearing are not workable if you really want citizen input on things. I think there are probably some other ways of getting that. Nancy has suggested a dedicated computer strictly to be used for those kinds of activities. I would be happy to provide it with a media of any other kind, a CD, if that's safer. You know, I just think you're hamstringing your community if you implement those particular restrictions. So I'm not a brain when it comes to IT work, but I do know that we have had issues trying to get large files by email into the city's system.
That's because of security reasons, again, I assume. Is that right?
I guess I may disagree. I'm aware of one instance when Mr. O'Brien tried to send a large file. We accept large files routinely. We send them, we receive them. We also utilize an FTP site. There are a lot of ways to take it. We did have an issue with one of your emails and the attachment associated with it, and, you know, we started looking into whether there was viruses that were kicking it out.
And that's what the concern is.
There were at least three instances, as we've gone through the sign code enhancement process, and I've had to print off on my home computer paper color copies of things in large quantities that don't make sense, because it's easier for you to see a photo of something, rather than a poor-quality printed document. There have been at least three occasions. On one of those three, I asked Tony, "What is wrong? What is going on?" And then I talked to the IT manager, and he was going to look into it. I don't believe it was resolved, because it happened again after that, on another occasion. So, thank you.
Thank you. May I respond to that?
Yes.
It is certainly not our intent to keep documents from being submitted. If that, and in the changes, it says that, it's requesting that the presentations be delivered to city staff preferably via electronic mail. If it's a different form, format, we can work with our IT to figure out a way to get that to us. Tony talked about an FTP site. I mean, there's multiple ways that we can get the information from the citizen. We just have to work through that, but we're just concerned about the device attaching to our system and then causing issues.
I have a question. One second. Oh, so your main thing is just wanting it in advance?
That's correct.
So that you can figure out how to deal with it?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that's, my question is, is 48 hours enough if you've got to go to some other method of importing this?
I, yes, I'm sure that's plenty of time.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
I understand both sides of this, but I do think that a prime example was last commission meeting, I think. A lady came in and just put her little flash drive in there and froze the computer. Is that correct? So, I mean, that is something we need to be concerned about. We don't want people getting into all of the personal stuff, but I also want to make sure that we do have the opportunities for citizens to display that. So I'm wondering if there was, like, kind of a happy medium here, if they either provided it, or, I know David Knoll is very good at all this kind of stuff, so I can't imagine that he couldn't get a file off of the email.
If it went to, like, a spam folder or something like that, or even if it just wouldn't even come because of a firewall, there's another way then that we can receive it. We would just, if the citizen isn't able to get something through, they would contact us and let us know that, you know, we couldn't, we didn't respond, or, you know, it was bounced back to them, or whatever, and then we would just find another means to do that.
So then the citizen, it would be on them to call the city and say, "I sent this."
That's correct.
Because there wouldn't be an email saying, "The city, you know, contacted the city..."
They need to ensure that their presentation has been received by the city.
Yeah.
Since I have 15 seconds left?
Go ahead.
There's often a two- or three-hour delay before the sender receives notification that something did not go through, and by that time, I might be on a shopping trip and not return for 10 hours.
Sure.
Nancy has been very good in working with me and her staff. If I've brought something in ahead of the meeting, and we loaded it onto the computer here, and that has worked very effectively, then it's on the computer. What I hear coming out tonight is that they don't any longer want the citizen to bring that flash drive in ahead of time, with that particular document being the only thing on the flash drive, and I find that perhaps unacceptable.
There are other, there's a device you can use that scans flash drives, you know, to see if there are viruses or whatever, you know, if it's a safe device. I mean, there's all kinds of options. We're just requesting that, you know, try email first, that's the simplest. If it doesn't go through, we'll go to Plan B. There's Plan B, and Plan C, and Plan D. There's multiple ways to get the information. If you are concerned, call us and ask, you know, "Did you get the email? Did you get the presentation that I sent?" And we'll go from there.
How expensive is the device you're referring to?
The scanning device?
Yeah.
I don't know. I believe that our IT department has one. I don't know for sure.
Thank you.
And just so that you're aware, too, the library has to deal with a lot of these issues as well, and they have citizens coming in with, you know, wanting to view things because they don't have equipment at home to view something, and so they come to the library to use the computers, and so, you know, they're having these same types of issues, but we just need to protect our systems and avoid as many viruses and insecurities as we can.
So is there a method to having a computer there that's not hooked up to our network that will just show on the screen? Is there a method to doing that? I prefer that you get the email in advance. I prefer that you get the information in advance, so it's in there, it's in the documentation, it's ready to go. That's my preferred method, but for an alternative method?
Having just an identified laptop, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I have considered that, and it would require a special laptop for that, because the laptop that staff uses, they're often drawing from the internet, from our network system, and pulling up their presentations.
Right, right, no, this would not be, this would be not a staff one.
Right. It may be a logistical issue, being that we only have a couple of places that we can actually project, because it's all, the system is all interconnected with the projector up here, and I don't think you'd want to take time during your meetings to move everything from one place to another, so...
Well, there's been a computer sitting there for a couple of years, and it's been okay.
What you're suggesting, right, and that is over here tonight.
Yeah.
We just wanted to try a test, just so that we can have the clicker up there, but...
Sure.
What you're suggesting is already a possibility within what's stated here in the rules. We're preferring via an electronic mail, but if we have to get a laptop that's dedicated to something like that, if we have to use other FTP sites, or whatever?
Yes.
We're willing to do that.
I'm going to suggest something here. This is item nine that pertains to this. I'm looking at it in one point, but it's two points. The citizen's external electronic device will not normally be used. That gives you a mechanism for dealing with it, should you have a mechanism of dealing with it. I'm looking at item nine, you have it another place. "The speaker wishes to give an electronic presentation. The presentation must be delivered to city staff preferably via email 48 hours prior to the meeting. That a citizen's external data device will not normally be permitted to be used on city equipment for security purposes." And that gives us the opportunity for not having to changes if we come up with a system that'll be able to do it.
Okay, but if there's, if it's an identified laptop, there aren't going to be security purposes, because it's not connected to the network.
Yeah, I understand that, but the point is, you may be able to have a different kind of firewall that would deal with it, and I just say, "will not normally be used, permitted."
Okay, we can make that adjustment.
Just to cover the possibility, you know it won't be an issue.
I think as we see a proliferation of this type of information being provided, primarily my concern is on the land use side. By our code, you're required to submit written or paper copy.
Right.
So as we've seen this proliferation of PowerPoints or pictures coming forward, you know, we don't get copies of that.
Yeah.
And it's not in the record, and no matter how many times we say, "Please turn in a paper copy," makes, you know, at some point, we need to put the onus on the person presenting the information to provide us the information in a legal manner, so that the applicant can respond to it.
The law's not keeping up with the...
I don't disagree, but to just come in, plug your hard, your flash drive in, and walk off with your flash drive, which I don't have it, I don't have no ability to, I have to go chase it down, it creates an issue.
Yes.
So the expectation to provide us, especially for public hearings that are announced more than a month in advance, I don't think is too onerous to get to staff so we have it, can not only have it in our record, but have it ready for you to move through it in an efficient manner.
And there's always the option, too, of having, bringing in a paper copy, which we'll make more of.
They were just saying that they didn't want to do the paper.
Yeah, but if all else fails, and they don't have time...
All I'm doing is suggesting a mechanism here of addressing some of the issues. Will not normally be used.
I really, I really do think emailing in advance is the best way to do it. But just for a backup system.
That's true. The same issue applies. You're getting, you're getting, you're still getting files. The fact that the file can't be transmitted over to the city.
Yeah.
But if we get the file in some form, it's in, it's a public record.
Yes, yes.
So, somebody brings in a file, we're able to extract it, we keep a copy of the file?
Yes. I like that.
I mean, I think that's all that, I mean, I think that's all you need. And this procedure enables to get a hold of that copy of the file.
No, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
The other concern I have obviously is that, that presentation that's coming into, through those doors into the chambers is not necessarily the only thing on that flash drive.
Right.
Which immediately is going to be popped on the screen. I mean, having that timeframe also allows staff to know what's coming and to, you know, so there's concerns there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Roth?
I, I think this is fine, but I would really like to reiterate what Betty was saying. I would like to go ahead and pass this, but with the stipulation that we look into getting a separate computer that would be available for those type of presentations and all, so it would just be part of what we do. So people could see it, that it's transparent. And also that we look into funding somehow. Technology is changing extremely rapidly right now. And to say that we're going to put the onus on the citizens, I think the citizens are probably 10 years ahead of the city at this point. And we need to stay up with the times if we're going to be able to serve them well.
If you, I'm just going to make a, I've got Mr. LaSalle is going to speak. And I, the point is even, the preference of sending email, there's no guarantee you're not going to open a file that's not going to have a virus on it on email either. I mean, that's, that's still a security issue.
But we have more protections.
I know you've got protections, but on the other hand, stuff still, I mean, there are people out there that are gaming the system, are going to figure out how the heck they're going to get something through and are successful. As we're always getting updates.
I guess just from the IT standpoint, you know, trying to lessen those opportunities.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree with Commissioner Roth, but we still have to have a mechanism when we, as in form of public testimony that's going into the record. We have to have a mechanism of having that, a copy of that file.
Yes. Oh, yeah, and I think if we've got the computer there, we've still got a 48 hour time limit to look at it ahead of time and see what's sitting there.
There, the concern with that is that because our, the laptop is connected to the projector and our, our system, it would not be projected on the television screen. So that, that would, because there's a, our AV tech has a system in there where he can press buttons and then it gets automatically put into the, onto the video. So that, that would go away, although we could keep the, somehow extract the hard copy and make it into a hard copy.
So I, I want to clarify one thing. Nancy, you were saying that people could bring you a hard copy?
Right.
And then you would either scan it into the record or have it submitted into the record. They don't have to copy off all of them for everybody at their home. They can just bring you one copy.
That's correct.
If a person is having presentations, they've already planned to come, they're already planning, as long as that information is really given to them on the website and really clear to them so that they know exactly what they need to do, I, I think that's the important thing is making sure that's communicated to people so they know what their options are.
We're actually going to include it as a disclaimer on the agenda if it was approved.
That's good.
Commissioner Smith?
I move to approve resolution.
Let's get Bob LaSalle. He's had his name.
Oh, I didn't know he was on there.
Yeah, Bob LaSalle, come on, come on forward and speak and then, and then we can take the motion.
I'm Bob LaSalle with Oregon City. And my concern is the citizen that comes to want to make a presentation who isn't familiar with your procedures. And there are a lot of those people that come up. The one lady from the Ames Street area that brought that flash drive in, she wouldn't ever been familiar with the 48 hour notice requirement. And so you would be, if you stuck strictly to the rules, you'd be restricting citizen comments and citizens' concerns. I think the idea of the laptop, dedicated laptop is good, but again, that obviously causes some additional problems with setting something up like that. My main concern would be citizens would not know of that requirement.
Well. In which case they can bring a hard copy. I mean, most people would go.
You would be able to have them give you.
But I, I want it to be clear too. I don't think anybody in this room wants to restrict citizen comment for any reason at all. This, we just have to look at providing a good mechanism for citizens to give us the information, but also for our staff here and our building to be protected electronically. And if it is true that people are coming in, and I do believe, because I've seen this with Tony before at Planning Commission, people will come in and give testimony and they'll bring stuff in and they'll walk out with it. But yet, that's part of the public record and people need to know that they need to leave us a, a copy.
And they've been good about stopping those people, at least the last few meetings, and saying, "Let us, let us copy that."
Which, yeah, which disrupts the meeting. So, you know, we just have to make citizen, we need to educate our citizens. But I totally believe that 90% of these people will be able to email it. And if not, they're going to contact staff and they're going to say, "There's an issue. What do I do?"
I don't, I'm speaking and I assume there are city councils in which they don't have the capability to hook in a flash drive for presentation to a council meeting.
There are, there are several.
And so the, that expectation would be an expectation that would result from them having to contact us to realize whether we have that capability even. With that, I think Commissioner Smith wanted to put in through the motion.
I'm going to move to approve resolution number 14 dash 16, approving Second Amendment to the City Commission Rules of Procedure.
May I make the request to just have that simple edit that I recommended?
With the addition, can you state that?
Yeah. I think it's a two points, but the citizen's external electronic data device is not normally permitted to be used. It gives them, I mean, if they got a mechanism of doing it, if we have a mechanism of doing it and it's approved by our city recorder, then that's fine. It's not normally to be used. That also deals with them having a different piece of equipment should we be able to do so. Is that okay?
So I guess I. Not if it doesn't get a second.
I, I want to have a.
No, you, you'd have to put it into your, your motion.
Well, I shall move with the addition.
Okay, but I want to be clear on what we're voting on. Can you, Mr. Bill?
Sure.
Read me what we are actually voting on, please.
As I understand the amendment by Mayor Neely, everything stays the same, but it, there are two places I believe it changes. One is on page 10 of 13. Number nine would be amended to, "If a speaker wishes to give an electronic presentation, presentation must be delivered to city staff preferably, preferably via email 48 hours prior to the meeting. Citizen's external electronic data device will not normally be permitted to be used on city equipment for security purposes." And a.
You, excuse me, I, I thought that he had scratched the last section on city equipment for security purposes.
No. Will not normally be permitted. It is not permitted. It's, it's being changed to will not normally be permitted. That's the only change.
That's why I wanted to be clear.
Oh, I, okay, I'm, I'm glad you clarified that.
Yeah.
And the other place where that would change is on page seven of 13 in the Order of Business subsection C, subsection four. The last sentence of that subsection would read, "If a speaker wishes to give an electronic presentation, the presentation must be delivered to city staff preferably via electronic mail 48 hours prior to the meeting. Citizen's external electronic data device will not normally be permitted to be used on city equipment for security purposes." And so, once in the specific quasi judicial setting, we have that and again in the normal course of business.
Okay.
The motion has been seconded by Commissioner Roth. And unanimous. Okay, thank you. And we have item 14, 3A3 has been pulled from the consent agenda at OLC liquor license application.
So do you want, do you want to approve the consent agenda without that first order?
No.
No, okay. So I pulled this and I did give Chief Ban a heads up. I was going to do this. My concern is this is still going to be a theater where they're going to still have young children and girlfriends and all this. So how are they going to, how are they?
Their boyfriend.
Or boyfriends, whatever. But my concern is they want a liquor, they want to be able to sell beer and wine and still show a movie and it's going to be dark. So I kind of want to know how they're going to separate this from the younger generation.
Good question.
And I'm sure that he could tell us all about it.
Okay, so one, one thing about OLLCC I'll start with just generally that isn't really specific here is when I, there's certain things you sign when you're chief. And I started asking, okay, what does this mean? What does this mean? What am I signing up to? Did some research into the OLLCC thing because what does it mean to approve and how do you, what do you do? We run the, we, typically somebody's applying for the license and we run that person to see if they have some kind of a criminal history. But a lot of times that's the owner who's not even always working. So what OLLCC basically told us was that it doesn't matter if you approve or disapprove this application, we're going to grant them a license anyway. They're going to be on probation initially, just like everybody, and we'll figure it out.
So we have no authority.
Yeah, i- in terms of their, their liquor license. But on, on the flip side, we don't, we know pretty quick if, if an establishment's going to cause a lot of problems. And anytime that we do have a problem with a particular bar or, or we find out that somebody's selling alcohol to minors, we take care of it pretty quick. You know, the squeaky will, it's a citation. So it, it usually the problem takes, takes care of itself. Now, in this particular case, I left because I, I got the guy's name on here.
Yes.
I talked to him during the, the meeting. I spoke to a guy named Duke Tufti, who was an attorney, who was their counsel for the Regal Cinemas and, and has been walking them through this process with, he's done it with six different cinemas in Oregon. I think he said six already. And there's another, at least six that are about to come. My battery died, but he had emailed me, "They have a 17 point plan in, in terms of how they're addressing all the questions that you asked." And he developed this with OLLCC. They asked for input saying, "How can we do this the right way?" Some of the things that are on it is, there are some theaters that, that you may have gone to in Portland, some of the McMinnimans where there's a different seating and that kind of stuff. That is not going to be the case here. What they do is anybody who wants to purchase alcohol, one, it's a mandatory identification presentation. Doesn't matter if you're 90 years old, every single person who's purchasing and it's beer and wine only.
Yes.
You have to show your ID. In order to purchase or consume alcohol inside the theater, you're going to wear a wristband. And the color of these wristbands is going to change at all times. Just, just so you can't, some kid can't make, "Well, all I got to do is make up a red wristband and I can go drink." The other thing is, is there's, there's a, something that they put on the wristband that is either taken off or marked off every time they buy a drink. There's a three-drink maximum. And it's monitored. There's training for all of their staff of, just like in any other establishment that sells alcohol, about recognizing the signs of impairment, what to do if somebody's impaired and you have to get them to leave. Requirements on underage drinking, these sorts of things, people immediately being kicked out of the theater, anybody who's providing alcohol. And then the attorney I spoke to said anecdotally, he said, "In the places that they have done this," he said, "People generally just have a beer. They go get a beer. They don't get up and keep going back and forth. They have a beer and watch the movie." And it's really in, in their best interest that all of the people who are at a movie aren't getting irritated with drunk people who are getting up and leaving a lot and this sort of stuff. My own opinion, just talking to him and seeing their plan, it's pretty comprehensive. And, and they, they seem to have really thought about it. And it, if it doesn't work for their customers, it's, it's not going to work for their business. And we will, we'll monitor it closely, just like we do any other. This is a new idea.
Yeah.
But after talking to him, I feel pretty good about it. And I think they've really done their homework trying to come up with a plan that's going to work for them and anybody goes into their theater.
So is it something that we can ask them to come and kind of explain to us in person? I don't know if anybody else is interested, but, you know, just so we can see it?
I can certainly ask them what, what might, it, it might be a shortcut and give you the same information as the email he sent me with their specific plan.
Okay.
I could forward that email.
Okay.
And it goes line by line. There's 17 points on it that tell you exactly what their, what their policy says that they're going to do.
It's kind of frustrating for OLLCC to have that kind of attitude, but that's beyond our scope of what we can deal with here. So that was.
And I think in, in sort of their defense, I don't, I don't know, but I think that the biggest problem with, with, with us would be if somebody's applying for a license, I don't care how you really want to interpret that. There's, there's one name, so there's really no way to know.
Yeah.
Who at, you know, midnight.
Who's actually going to be serving.
Is up there serving right now.
Yeah.
So, but I will say that whenever there is a problem or any kind of complaints of underage drinking or fights or these sorts of things, we get OLLCC involved and they are, they're really quick to help out and they put, when an establishment knows that OLLCC is involved, they straighten out really fast and, because they can get their license pulled and, you know, their business goes away.
And it is kind of nice that it's right up there next to the police station itself. That's kind of a, a nice little perk for me. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion? Oh, Commissioner Roth, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I just have a, a kind of a minor question. I've never seen anybody, well, I've not been there a lot, but I've never seen anybody over 18 that is, who's going to be serving this? Have they addressed that in their 17 points?
I read through them and I do not believe that there's anything, I don't remember seeing anything on there. I, I would look, but like I said, my battery died. I know that whatever normal rule exists.
Will apply.
For selling alcohol, they're going to have to follow that.
Okay.
Yeah.
They mostly look like about 12 to me, but.
I wonder if the beers are going to be $16.
Okay, well, thank you.
Commissioner Roth has moved to that.
Oh, I will move to approve item number 14 dash 383, OLLCC liquor license application limited on premises sales applying as a corporation, East Gate Theater, Inc., DBA Hilltop 9, 325 Bieber Creek Road, Oregon City, Oregon 97045.
Second.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ross. Vote is unanimous. That, a motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Roth? And again, unanimous, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last meeting, I mentioned to you in my reports that the League of Oregon Cities was asking member cities to identify their legislative priorities for the next upcoming session. You have four spaces that you can fill out. We have been meeting with LOC staff to prepare for the possibility of the county lobbying with other special districts to restrict. with other special districts to restrict the Home Rule authorities of cities across Oregon to charge right-of-way fees for usage of their public assets. And, um, so in preparation for that, the league has suggested that we, uh, would want to focus on at least, um, two of these that relate to telecommunications and they are items Q and R under the telecommunications section here. So your staff is recommending that you identify those two as priorities for sure and then we have no opinion on the remaining two.
Yeah.
So, we're going to hand this out to you and you have a few days to turn that back.
I think we have it on the email, but yeah, that's-
You also have it electronically.
Yeah.
So, e- either way, we'll take the data and-
I'm, I'm, I'm in the process, the city makes a recommendation, is that right?
No, you, you identify-
We as individuals.
Yeah, you, yeah, you tell us and we'll tally it up.
Okay, great.
And it's actually, you guys have had a lot of consensus in the past, so I'm, um, but we will tally up the total of the four and then we will let the league know.
When is the date of submission?
It's, it's on the front there. It's Friday, July 11th is the deadline.
So we need to get them in, we will not have the chance to, uh, discuss, discuss this.
It's a pretty quick, quick read after you, um, get them in. But after you turn in your tally to our staff, then we will report back to you the top vote getting ones, so. I also reported earlier on the Ermentinger, so I won't repeat that, but, um, the next thing I also want to tell you about is this week, the, as you know, the city aggression, I don't know if you remember this from all the emails I sent you about right-of-way litigation, but the city aggression had a, a case pending at the Court of Appeals. There had been a trial court decision that restricted their ability to charge a 7% right-of-way fee and the utilities that were complaining about it filed suit at the trial court, they insisted that they could only charge them 5%. And the trial court agreed with the utilities and the city aggression appealed and today the city aggression won on their appeal. It was reversed and remanded in favor of Home Rule Authority for the city aggression. So that's one more Court of Appeals case that supports Home Rule Authority to manage a right-of-way. So we're conceding that good news. It was a little bit different fact pattern than our case, but I think that's the direction and I think if the Court of Appeals keeps saying it long enough, people will begin to believe it, but-
Some people may never get that.
If I might ask a question, um, have, were any of those other, uh, appeals going through the claim that, uh, it was a form of a tax as opposed to?
It's not so much it's a form of a tax.
No, but that's a claim that the county's making.
They're not claiming it's a privilege tax, they're claiming it's a property tax.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Did any of the other-
That was not part of the decision in the Gresham case.
That wasn't.
So this is a little bit unique and it's-
But I don't want to get into any of the more details of that.
No, I understand that, I just-
But, uh, yeah, that's the argument the county's made and that's in the public record, it's in their complaint and pretty soon, we'll have a motion to dismiss and that'll be in the public record. And then we can talk about this ad nauseam.
Okay.
That's, uh, concludes my report.
Okay, now, a couple things. One is that we've got a study session coming up on Tuesday. One is a joint session with the planning commission. I will be able to make that, but I will not be able to make the city commission study session. Uh, it's a topic I'm, we're familiar with because both Commissioner Polly and I sit on the, uh, on the legacy board, right, it's on the board, but whatever it is, we sit on it. But I, I won't be here for that, so you'll take over that particular session if you would.
Oh, okay. Perfect, thank you.
Um, the, the, a presentation that was made at the Metro Policy Advisory Committee in the last meeting that we had, um, a component of it, uh, it was partially associated with the active transportation system, uh, processes going through, which is having, uh, the safe pedestrian bikeways and the extension of that. There's a presentation made on, uh, traffic safety and, um, on, in every category, uh, in terms of, um, issues of total traffic fatalities, bicycle fatalities, bicycle serious inju, uh, injuries, pedestrian fatalities, pedestrian serious injuries, they weren't, um, they weren't put on a proportion of the population, but it was very clear Clackamas County is the worst.
Oh.
And that's of, that's of the, uh, that's of Washington County, Monomah County, Clark County and Clackamas County. We, I hope we've had all the chance to look at the 2013 police report.
Which I really appreciate you guys putting together.
I think, I think it's great. But, uh, this police report also gives the indication of how Oregon City fares in the county. Where comparisons of Lake Oswego, Westland, Milwaukee and Oregon City, we have the greatest nu, uh, number. Very grateful for the police chief who put forward the, the new traffic division that we have now, uh, that's going to be able to deal with this, some of these things. But I think it's important that we, we actually deal in the next goal-setting session, a reduction of these, of these incidents. I let the chief know that I was going to bring this up and offered him the opportunity to comment a bit on this. Because actually, it's, it, a lot of it's one specific area.
Yeah.
This, I, I've mentioned this a couple times publicly, but where, uh, when we were looking at, uh, a grant that we ended up getting for the e-ticket, electronic ticketing, paperless tickets, basically, uh, that software, I was curious about how we're going to get the grant. So when I looked at the criteria, I wanted to know our likelihood, so I started researching. And one of them was on, "What's your crash data?" And did some research and was a little bit alarmed that, uh, the odds that we were going to get the grant were very, very, very good. And, so that's great for getting a grant, but the bad news is, our, our crash stats were really high. So we started trying to figure out why and, uh, worked with ODOT and, uh, John and I had a lot of discussions and we had been kind of tag teaming this, uh, a little bit from both of our ends. And one of the things we got, we, we talked to somebody at ODOT who, they, uh, they're really good with, uh, taking the DMV crash stat, stuff that comes out every year and compiling reports, and then they have somebody who specifically analyzes that data and they break it down to, uh, the types of crashes, locations of crashes and this sort of stuff. The most alarming, uh, location is 213 in Beaver Creek. I think there were 100, 173 people between 2010 and '12 were injured in crashes just at that intersection. And I spoke to the, the TAC about this and then eventually, we took all that information that we had about all those, uh, uh, locations, gave them to John and they, they made maps, literally breaking everything down by, uh, what, what types of crashes were happening in, in intersections and what were the worst ones. So our traffic guy is aware of that. Some of this stuff is engineering stuff that is just going to take money to fix. We're, so we're, you know, trying to strategize that in the future, how do we fix those sorts of things? And John can speak to that, I think. And then we've got our, our, our traffic officer and, uh, other officers who are working, they're, they're aware of what's going on and what we're trying to fix. There's an education piece that our traffic officer is doing a safety class now that's being extremely well-attended, uh, basically to first-time offenders and love a citation. And, uh, and frankly, we're looking at every option, uh, even options I don't necessarily like, uh, for some of these intersections in terms of enforcement because they're, it's kind of tough to, especially 213 and Beaver Creek, that's a very difficult intersection to, you know, where do you sit? Where does an officer sit, whether he's on a bike or, or on a car? So we're looking at some alternatives that have worked in, uh, in other places, just-
No.
We're, we're, we're looking at everything. But, and, and, and maybe the reason we look at things like that is so we determine it's a bad idea. You know, but I, I, I think that for, for us, for me and, and, and I know for John, if, if we haven't looked at something at least said, "Yeah, we're, we're educated now that that's a bad idea."
Yes.
You know, I don't like it either, but I'm, I'm not going to not look at it because I don't like it. I'm going to look at it and see.
Did you make an assumption as to what the solution might be?
Maybe, maybe I made that assumption.
I got a ticket once, probably the same kind of thing.
So, I, I think the important thing that I, that I think everybody should know is that we're, we've been aware of this for a, a while and we've been working on it for a while. And, you know, the, the citations and the education and that kind of stuff, we can do what we can do right of way, but the big fixes are very expensive and, uh, so that's in our, in our long-term, uh, stuff. And I, I don't know if you have anything to say about the whole thing, John?
They're very expensive and very big. Yeah, I think, I think I'm happy that we have a, a transportation advisory committee that's pretty focused on these issues. They're concerned about these issues as, as our staff. And seeing that data in, uh, you know, the reality of some of those accidents is, is good for us to see and to think about. So, yeah, uh, things like SDCs and, you know, this problem with federal funding is a big one, the fact that there's not much of it.
Yes.
That's not probably something that the city commission can take on, but, uh, I think throughout the region, the fact that, Doug, you've been pretty active with, uh, the C4, so as Betty has, you know, so there's letters from the appropriate people in the state that are kind of asking for more funding, but, uh, but then there's the little things we can do as well, things like pedestrian crossing, um, signals help, uh, striping, we're doing a better job with, with marking crosswalks and things like that. So it's just nice to know where best to focus and recognize that the data tells us a lot about where we should be focused in our capital expenditures, so.
Our purpose in issuing tickets, no matter what the mechanism might be for determining whether there's been wrongdoing, is not to increase the revenue to Oregon City.
No.
It is to increase the safety.
Safety. I agree.
Uh, so I'll start from my left again to ask if anybody else has anything to say. Commissioner Roth, my extreme left, Commissioner Polly.
I have nothing, you can move on, Commissioner Roth.
Well, I was going to, to mention some things about, I wanted to thank the commission again for my trip to Japan, and I was going to mention some things, but it's getting late, so I think what I'm going to do is put together a little brief slideshow. Next time, I do, do want to talk about-
48 hours.
I hope it's not too big of a presentation. What I did want to talk about was this one. We went to a paper folding factory called Mitsuhiki. And, um, evidently, I've got a talent for this.
Okay.
Folding these weird flower things. But, um, there was a woman who was helping us who spoke no English and I spoke no Japanese, but I think I got hired.
What's the pay?
I, we didn't clarify that.
Ah, that's the issue right there, yeah.
But it was a wonderful trip and I really would like to thank you all for that.
Good.
Okay, very good. Commissioner?
Sorry, I have nothing.
That's unusual.